Council resumes. Dr. Helena Wong.
Madam Deputy. We are dealing with the Freight Containers Safety Amendment Bill 2019. At the second reading, I pressed my request to speak button. Unfortunately, the President had already drawn the line and was not allowed to speak. Now we are dealing with the question of whether clauses 1 to 12 should stand part of the bill. The purpose of the bill is to implement latest safety standards under the International Convention for Safe Containers with some technical amendments. Of course, the technical amendments about the SAP and how containers should be stacked for safety purpose and how to deal with containers approved for operation with one door opened or removed, the testing procedures and specifications, and also changes in the terms of physical measurement to be used on SAPs, including replacing the term weight with mass. We have no objection to updating the legislation to align with the International Convention. The reason why the DP cannot support the bill's second reading and for these clauses to stand part of the bill is because of clauses 10, 11, and 12. They are our greatest concern because under clause 10, which amends section 27, one of the ordinance, to put in place a direct reference approach so that the details may be revised from time to time as adopted in the IMO. This will change our practice and will also deprive members of the opportunity to amend the relevant amendments. The reason behind the administration's move is perhaps for efficiency. In the past, indeed, we have seen how the administration dealt with resolutions passed by IMO. We failed to amend the relevant legislation in time. And so, when, as a result, we were years behind when it comes to alignment with international standards. In 2010, IMO introduced a number of revisions, but we are at least 10 years behind. Some were approved in 2013, and we are seven years behind. I don't know whether it has got to do with the THB or for some of the reasons we have to wait for so long before the legislation can be updated. Now certainly, the administration wants to speed up things. And this is by means of clause 10. And we have great reservation with this approach. Now, IMO, International Maritime Organization, would revise the technical requirements from time to time. So clause 10 seeks to repeal the original provision. And in future, by means of direct reference approach, the requirements under the convention will be included into the legislation. So the schedule is now removed. Instead, it is replaced by an annex that is in compliance with the convention. Members of the public may not see why we have to oppose a bill that is technical in nature. They may think that we will oppose anything from the administration. But the DP would like to say here that we disagree to transferring the power to amend regulations to the Director of Marine. For clauses 10 to 12, they are going to repeal the schedule. Instead, the Director of Marine will be empowered to, by means of the Gazette, directly amend the ordinance in the future in order to amend the annex to the ordinance in the future in order to enforce latest revisions under the convention. That means when it comes to scrutinizing the legislation and also our power to make amendments will be lost. Instead, the power is now transferred to the administration in the form of Director of Marine. Now, if the amendments are technical in nature, why shouldn't the administration from time to time take out things that may be changed from time to time by the IMO and put it in the schedule to the principal ordinance? Now, we have done lots of items of subsidiary legislation. The administration can use a negative vetting approach from members of the council to examine the so-called technical amendments in the relevant sub-leg. So why can't we adopt the same approach? These technical requirements that may be changed from time to time should be taken out from the principal ordinance and put it in the schedule. So it's just a structural change. And the power of lawmakers to annex legislation will not be undermined because under the basic law, it is our privilege to enact laws. So why should Legco's power to examine and amend legislation be taken away from us? You may say that the standards under the convention might be changed from time to time, but I'd like to know how often. I don't think they're going to do it on a monthly basis. If they do it twice a year, that is already very frequent. I think at most, they will do it every few years. So there's no way the council cannot cope. So you should take them out from the principal ordinance and put it under a schedule, which we have tackled a number of times, for instance. In this term of council, we just dealt with amendments to water supply legislation. Because of the lead contaminator water incident, we have to amend the parameters in fresh water, the amount of potassium and cadmium, this and that. We have to amend our requirements with reference to standards in Britain, for instance. Now, apart from water safety, we've also got food safety. I've just dealt with legislation involving adulteration of food with heavy metals, lead and mercury and cadmium in food. Well, the standards have been upgraded or revised in the form of subsidiary legislation. When it comes to container safety and also the technical amendments, why should you give the power to the Director of Marine only so that Legco will not have to be consulted in future? Now, can you adopt the same approach for food safety? Could you just ask the FEHD, the Center for Food Safety, to deal with it? And also water facilities in future, water pumps and faucets and taps and feedments, for instance, can they be dealt with solely by the Director of Water Supplies? Well, I think by the logic, Legco can close. There is nothing we need to attend to, and the executive can take everything in its own hands. But I don't see how efficient the administration can be. How come we've waited for more than a decade before the standards here are upgraded? And the same can be said for water and also food safety. You are in violation of the basic law because you have eroded Legco's power to examine and enact legislation. Now, I have no objection about how one-door container should be tested and whether SAPs should be in English or Chinese or French. These are not the most important things. The point is, this piece of legislation was set a very bad precedent. You're eroding the power of the legislature and keep empowering the executive. Now, if we allow the Director of Marine to do this, I don't know what will happen to gatekeeping of food safety. Can Legco be bypassed in the future? We just dealt with heavy metals in food. But what about other contaminants and other toxins in food? And in oil and in other things, I have been urging the administration to see to such matters. All right, there will be a new round of public consultations starting from the 6th of November. And then they will brief the relevant panel. And we can then, by means of subsidiary legislation, we can set up a subcommittee. And in the discussion, we can arouse the attention of the community and the industry. Now, very stealthily, you are going to empower the Director of Marine to do this. And then after deleting the schedule, you have an annex. We don't even have a Chinese rendition for this annex. You are going to repeal the original schedule, which is in both Chinese and English because we're bilingual here. Now, the bill is going to receive its third reading soon. And yet, you haven't given us the Chinese text of annex for us to scrutinize. This is even worse than the previous version, which is bilingual. At least, we have the opportunity to examine it and to see whether the translation is in order. Now, Legco was supposed to enact bilingual laws, but for this sub-leg, you don't have the Chinese text for us yet. Again, you have violated our longstanding convention. Does that mean that everyone in this industry can read English or that they can't read Chinese at all so that you don't need to provide a Chinese text? The administration owes us an explanation as to why you have adopted this approach. We have got ample subsidiary legislation involving food safety, water safety, and also the control over the number of baby formula cans that can be brought out of Hong Kong. The LP is very familiar with this subject. I don't believe that our subsidiary legislation has to be amended so frequently that even the council or the executive cannot cope. You may as well give the power to the Director of Marine. We don't even know whether the Director of Marine is going to update legislation according to latest standards. They will just publish it in the Gazette, and there may be things in this sub-leg that doesn't fit Hong Kong, but we won't have any opportunity to discuss it. On the one hand, I welcome the latest amendments so that we can be on par with the convention requirements. But this approach has deprived Legco members of the ability to enact and examine legislation. It's boosting the power of the executive. We are supposed to have separation of powers in Hong Kong with checks and balances. However, the power is now lopsided, is all given to the executive. What do you call a transfer of power? Not you have deprived Legco's powers. So DP cannot support this.
Ms. Claudia Moe.
Consideration by committee of the whole council over clauses 1 to 12 as the standing part of the bill. Now, this bill being the Freight Containers Safety Amendment Bill 2019. And I'll tell my personal considerations accordingly. Now, this bill is certainly ceremonial, and it's fairly straightforward. And of course, there are no smoke and mirrors. But then, if you look at the actual purpose of the bill, the original Legislative Council brief tells us that there are two sets of purposes. The first one is to standardize, according to Universal Convention, the requirements for testing and inspecting containers. Testing and inspecting. And a second is to prescribe uniform procedures of such containers' maintenance and the control of safe transportation. So that sounds all fine, except if you look at the bill itself, the introduction says this Freight Containers Safety Ordinance is to implement the latest requirements of the International Convention for Safe Containers relating to the manufacture, use, and examination of freight containers. The word manufacture was never mentioned in the original presentation by the Bureau. And it tells you, in effect, has been stating a very sad fact. And that is, there's no such manufacturing in Hong Kong. Do we manufacture containers in Hong Kong? I doubt it very much. I just don't think it exists. And it also reminds one of the fact that our unemployment rate has been going up and up. It's reached almost the highest ever these days. And yet, the government doesn't look at the manufacturing sector. Okay, that, never mind. What I really think we should seriously lament is the fact that the officials simply fail to address all the concerns and previous earlier queries over the discrepancies in language between the Chinese and English versions. Excuse me? I thought somebody was saying something to me. Not really. Need a drink. Now, my previous queries involve the huge discrepancy and probably might just lead to misunderstanding of certain terms. And that is why the English word dimension would become foot and inch in Chinese. That could be fairly misleading. It's unnecessary. And he couldn't care less. He chose to ignore the official in charge. And he certainly chooses to look the other way. And another example is the word capacity. It's now become, as far as this bill is concerned, ability in Chinese. Could you tell them to just keep quiet? What are you sitting there for? I mean, this is very obstructive.
Ms. Moe, please continue. Members, please do not make any noises while you are in your seat that would interrupt others' speeches. Ms. Moe, please continue.
Elvin Young was saying earlier. And I mentioned that yesterday as well. And that is the word mass. It's now quality and quantity in Chinese. That's very, very odd. The word mass could mean so many things in English. What about mass demonstration? Right? What about a mass at church? Right? And how could you, in this context, when we're talking about freight containers, to simply translate it into, what is it called, quality and quantity? This is just so very odd. And specifically about the clauses. In clause 3, bracket 2, there's a line saying, add in alphabetical order. Well, when you talk about the alphabet, of course, it's in English. But then the Chinese version says, please add in accordance with the number of strokes in Chinese characters. So that affects. Now, why did you bother, in this case, to count the number of strokes in Chinese characters? I just do not see the virtue of doing this. And as a result, it would be in different orders, the Chinese and English versions. Because in English, you would be following the A, B, C, the alphabet. But in Chinese, it's all according to the numbers of lines in each character. I suppose the leading, the starting character, right? So this is very unnecessarily confusing and misleading. Now, you would think, ah, the words are words. And what's the big deal about certain translations or some slight discrepancies? But they could be important. And don't you think, I'm just being nitpicking? And don't you ever come back to this legislature to ask this council to once again change a certain language in certain ordinances to the effect of, for the purpose of achieving uniformity? Now, that's going to be very, very absurd. So this whole business about the language in this bill could prove ultimately an indictment on this government sense of legal or linguistic correctness. And I urge this administration, especially the judiciary, to seriously watch out. Now, in clause 4, there's another very curious difference between the Chinese and English versions. In English, clause 4 simply says repeal use or. And then substitute, use the container or. Okay, they added the word the container only. But in Chinese, it's completely, well, fairly completely different. It says repeal the original wording of
So repeal,使用或准许, substitute,使用该货或
This other person come from. I haven't got the original ordinance to make comparisons. And so this is very baffling. Why is it that in Chinese, suddenly, there's a human being, words constituting the form of a human being, suddenly appear in clause 4? Where did this actually come from? So this is all very baffling. And let me go to, after clause 4, let me go to clause 7. Now, again, I actually asked questions over this particular clause. And I don't think, I don't think I got a reply. It says, repeal paragraph A, never mind, I mean, all these legal mazes of wordings. But it basically says, if the construction of a container or the container, the container in question, right? If a container was completed, the construction of this container was completed before the 1st of July 2014, and no structural modification has ever been made to the container. And then, this particular container is exempt from the new requirements. Now, the provision clearly states that no structural modification has ever been made. What I am rather muddled about is how this confirmation that there's been no structural modification has ever been made, made? How do you get this confirmation at all? Do you need another certification? Or you just take the word of the owner of the, well, or the freight proprietor's declaration? Oh, nothing has been changed as it is. So, I mean, we will have Marine officials checking all those safety approval plates, right? And you just take their word for it? Is that it? There's no actual examination as a result? Is that what we are talking about? Because Marine officials checking at the containers, you don't expect SWAT teams or black helicopters swirling around to do the inspection. So what exactly do you do with this? Do you have an extra plate to confirm that this container is exempted from the new requirements because it's oldish? It's manufactured before that cutoff date? And it enjoys this grace treatment? Is that the case? I just don't know. And I don't know if I could put my confidence and trust in our Marine officials. Because ever after our LAMA tragedy on October 1st, 2012, I just don't know how perfunctory the examinations would be at the end of the day. And I have quoted not just, when it comes to the bill, I have quoted not just discrepancies in the introduction. I have mentioned my discomfort over the language business. And I have specifically mentioned clause 4 and, well, the adding of an extra human being kind of thing in the wording. And clause 7, what I'm addressing now, that certain containers which are old and hasn't been modified in any way could be exempted. Now, based on all those points I have made, I'm afraid I have to vote against this. Thank you.
Last member speaking, Dr. Penander Chang. Thank you, Madam Deputy. It's better for me not to wear a mask. I would like to
I would like to explain to the public the grounds of not wearing the mask because, like, I don't have anyone within a certain distance that's deemed as safe. On the Freight Container Safety Amendment Bill 2019, for where that's clause one to twelve to stand part of the bill, I have few concerns. For the clauses to stand part of the bill is to incorporate the latest requirement and standards of the International Convention for Safe Containers, which I mentioned in this residual second reading that have been seven years too late, which will modify, help make a corresponding adjustment. And of course, there are some commencement date provision in clause three, but also would also mention repeal certain sections and also replace the reference to weight and mass to adopt the latest terminology of the code, which I don't have a problem with. And clause four of the bill also have some textual amendments that wish the Chinese word, the weight, is replaced by mass and to adhere closely to the convention to make sure it is aligned with international standards of measurement, international system of units, rather. I have some doubts on this and wish to point out that this bill may contradict create to existing statutes instead, in terms of the language. And for clause seven, amend the ordinance section ten, disturb plate that the containers that not met, that manufactured before first of July, 2014, and did not undergo structural modifications, that this new requirement will not apply the new requirements of affecting the SAPs. I also have doubts on this. Like colleagues before me have wondered why you decided to draw the line on first of July, 2014? For me, I don't have much issues with the date. I understand the logic behind it because the convention have propagated 2013 and took effect in 2014. Thus, by logic extension, we shall adopt the convention effective date. Which that will set the line for offering exemption. While there are other considerations though, which I will explain later. And for clause twenty-seven, authorize the Secretary for Transport and Housing to establish rules. And the clause ten, that as he mentioned that it will use the direct reference approach, that which will, of course, will need to be amended from time to time. And the colleagues before me, they have some word on the, this direct reference approach. Because it may deprive logical opportunities to amend this regulation. Well, I'm probably not too concerned about this. Well, logically speaking, for the international conventions, which will agree to adopt certain terminologies, with enacting local legislation or subsidiary legislation, the closer we adopt the convention's language, the better whether in terms of start drafting and the terms. And for the DRA approach, there should be some flexibility in place instead of straight copy and paste. Well, to adapt to local legislations, we need to make certain adjustments. Thus, I would like to flag my concern here. And for the schedule, schedule one have outlined the structural safety requirements and test standards. And since that this schedule will be repealed, the five, six, eight, nine will amend section five, six, ten, eight, and fourteen of ordinance to make direct references to the annex two of the convention. Well, which have also adopted direct reference approach, thus I will not repeat my concerns here. And clause two, introduce a new schedule two in place of the old schedule two to provide latest requirement on the markings and fixings of the SAPs, which included the additional marking requirements for SAP of containers with limited stacking or racking capacity, which offer exemptions for certain class of containers that completed before the first of July, 2014. And for clause four, with sections four of ordinance to replace the reference to mass, but weight by mass. And for the definition of weight and mass, I will not repeat them here. Just now, Mr. Elvin Young had explained it clearly. He just gave us the brief lessons in high school physics, explaining the difference between the two. And even, they also have different unit of measurements. Thus, they are two totally different things. To replacing weight with mass, so we are following the international system of units, and that's, is beyond dispute. However, in 2016, we have this merchant vests souls cap three, seven, nine aviation aviation, safety and cargoes and oil fuels regulations. These regulations will take effect on January, 2016. And in section three A, the International Convention of Civil Safety requirements have incorporated in three, six, nine, AV, section three, three A. And the regulation contain the mention of the gross weight that need to be validated. And these regulations have used the word weight and outlined how the container can be awaited. How for this bill, we use the term mass to replace weight? And in the three, six, nine, AV, for the, the, let it gross weight is in turn, there's a inconsistency with the wording. I'm worried after we pass this amendment bill, if there's inconsistency with that ordinance, we need to enforce provisions or invoke it. The public or the companies or the staff concerned may have some confusion that should they be adopting a mass or the weight? These are two radically different concepts and measured differently. And for three, six, nine, AV, on the merchant shipping safety carriage of cargoes and oil fuel regulations, as for the, there are two ways to validate the gross weight, which I'm not elaborate here. And there are very specific procedures provided in the ordinance or regulations, also involving the tear weight and also the, the mass as well as the gross weight. If we don't have a consistency on statutes, that might give rise to a lot of dispute in the future. I wonder if the undersecretary would attempt to explain. Well, for the remaining time, would she consider a corresponding amendments of the merchant shipping safety carriage of cargoes and oil fuel regulations? Otherwise, I'm worried that this inconsistency shall remain and there will be difficulty enforcing the law. And for the clause four amendments, I'm expressing concern. And for clause seven, in setting the deadline for exemption, I also spot some problems. When you exempted the containers that were manufactured before the first of July, 2014, so how many containers are we talking about? I wonder if the government have studied that or do some tally that for, like, over the past year of the container process, take 2019, for example, we have eighteen point three million standard containers. That's our throughput for the year. Of course, that is a sharp drop. In back in 2014, we had over twenty million. For this eighteen odd million containers, how many of those were manufactured before 2014? And this regulation have took effect for about six years. And the containers, since, well, in other countries, the, the legislation have took effect immediately, thus they already changed the location of their SAPs. And over time, our operators are getting used to the new location of the SAP and also to operate this class of containers. As we know, when they have a clear display of the SAP, they have different way of handling them. I'm wondering if the undersecretary or the relevant public officers, when proposing these amendments, especially in offering this exemption, have you consulted the container port operators? And if they work on their cranes and forklifts? And how do they look for the SAPs? And sometimes they need to bend forward forty-five degrees to look for the SAPs. If you offer exemption so that this older containers should never should change the location of the SAPs, and then they will need to spot for the new and the old ones. Well, the recent carrier study found that eighty percent of the respondents have having back pain or protruded disc. Well, I also have the same problem for the fourth effect section. And this is the most common complaint. Dr. Chan, I think you're aggressing. I will, I'm not going with the exemption for the continuous manufacture before first of July, 2014. They are exempted from a proper display of the SAPs. Your time is up.
The debate has come to a close. I would like the Secretary for Transport and Housing to reply. Secretary for Transport and Housing. Hang on, Dr. Hanan Wang. Corum call, please. Dr. Hanan Wang claims a corum. We have a quorum. Council resumes. Secretary. Madam Deputy, I'm grateful to members for their views and uh concerns about the bill. As I said in my second uh reading reply. The purpose of the bill is to implement the latest amendments to the international convention. In relation to the stacking and also S A Ps of containers. Uh to subsume such requirements in CAF five oh six, so that these requirements I can. Apply in Hong Kong, the exemption under clause seven is in accordance with the requirements of the convention and therefore. Uh the bill is technical in nature. The uh direct reference approach. Means that the direct from direct reference to provisions of international agreements and local law source to apply such provisions locally. Many marine related international agreements are technical in nature and they are clear and specific. And widely applicable to contracting parties internationally and of interest to only a specific group of people. And so we've adopted D R A in quite a number of local legislation when implementing marine related international requirements. I stress that the D R A uh will not uh uh usurp the power of the council, it will not bypass the council. This will ensure that the stacking and um of uh containers will uh be entirely. Um in compliance with the latest requirements in the convention, it can further ensure freight safety. I urge members to support the bill. Thank you. And I put a question to that the clauses read out by the clerk stand part of the bill. Were those in favor, please raise their hands. Mister Lam, Chuk Ting claims a division. The division bill will be rung for one five minutes. Voting begins. Please check your vote. If there are no questions, voting closed. The result is displayed fifty five in attendance, thirty six for eighteen against. The question has been agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. All the proceedings on the freight containers safety amendment bill twenty nineteen have been concluded in committee of the whole council. Council now resumes. Secretary for Transport and Housing. President and now report to the council that the freight containers safety amendment bill twenty nineteen. Has been passed by committee of the whole council without amendment and move the motion that this council adopts the report. And I propose the question to you that the secretary's motion be passed. No court, uh and I'll put the question to you as stated. Would those in favor, please raise their hands. Mister Open Young claims a division. The bill will be rung for five minutes. Mister Abraham Shack, please check your vote. If there are no questions, voting is closed. The result is displayed fifty five in attendance, thirty six for eighteen against. The question is agreed by a majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. Third reading, freight containers safety amendment bill twenty nineteen, secretary for transport and housing.